Mary Jean Krieger, President. Mitch Magnus, President. David Wilson, here. Brian Oswald, President. Peter Patrick, President. Joel Williams, President. Deanna Taylor, President.
Mr. Goulas will be hopefully here. He told me maybe later when I need to be here, so Mr. Pratt, myself, will play attorneys tonight. Look out, look out. At this time, I'm going to ask everybody to please stand, and we will have our prayer, the prayers by Mr. Brian Herring, and also our pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to do the business of this great city. We pray for wisdom and direction. We pray that you would guide our hearts and our minds, as we put all our faith and hope in you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're kind of deviating from our normal agenda tonight. I recognize, we've got our District 98 representative here with us tonight, Mr. Ron McNair. You want to say your name?
Nope, I'm just here to business.
Okay, let's have it. Thank you for coming. Okay, we get started. Mr. Leese is here with the hospital, and he's got a little presentation they want to present to us.
Thank you very much for allowing me to present this project. We'll start with a few slides here to kind of lead you through a little story about the hospital over time. And we're going to talk a little bit about a project that I've got ready to go. I'll show you some pictures dating back to the 50s. This is the way the hospital looked in the 50s. There were seven physicians and 51 employees. And the picture that we took this from had a little of the background, one percent of it. I don't know if anybody knows the history behind that, but it might be interesting to learn that in the future. In the 60s, the hospital looked like this, 103 beds. It's called Boone County Hospital. I think if we had any one of those cars parking out there in good shape, it probably worth some money. In the 70s, the hospital was up to 137 beds, and this is the way it looked. As you can see right now, with those cars, we're sitting right next to about where our fountain is right now in front of the hospital. In the 80s, the facility looked like this. This is a picture of the facility from about where Bauer and Maine converged at the stoplight. 161 beds at the time, and now it's called North Arkansas Medical Center. North Arkansas Regional Medical Center, we added the MRI building. That's where that section is, and you can see the stop there for the coolant that's in that MRI, and the mammography section there, too. Again, 1990, Claude Parish Raytion Therapy Institute. We got a large donation from Claude Parish. If you look carefully at the guy on the left there with the tie and the white shirt, that's no point. He was up here to christen that building with us. Again, the emergency room was expanded in 1999. You see the helicopter sitting right there in the foreground. That's where they used to land, right in front of the emergency room. In 2000, now we're up to 171 beds and about 700 employees. And we're going to talk a little bit about numbers here in just a few minutes, and talk about the contribution to the community. The hospice house was built in 2006. This building was constructed of donations from the Hospice of the Hills Foundation. Our hospital runs that. We staff it. We use our licenses. And this is a picture before the expansion. This is a great contribution to our community by people who donate a lot in the run. In 2010, we're up to 174 beds and about 800 employees. The new tower, I want to, the folks who got together to push the building of that new tower, the time that they did, they are the reason that there's a hospital here today. Because without a facility like that, I couldn't recruit doctors here in Arkansas. So anytime I run onto somebody who was involved in it, I got to thank them, because that was an important contribution to this community. We are doing a number of new things. We've opened a behavioral health unit. Our hospital is part of the Arkansas Trauma System. We're a Level 3 trauma center. That means we have a general surgeon, we're a pethis doctor call 24 hours a day. We have all board certified emergency physicians. We've also purchased Mediquik, which is the old Millennium Building right behind the hospital, where that was currently located. We had a lot of physicians' offices in that building. This is about the time, I came here in 2011, and this was about the time that regulation, information systems, compliance, this became overwhelming for doctors. So doctors looked for partners, and we were looking for doctors. So what it boils down to is that physicians in hospitals certainly get together and employ physicians. When a resident comes out right now out of a medical center, 99% of them want a job. They don't want to open a practice. So we spend a fair amount of time recruiting doctors here in Arkansas, and I'll show you some slides later. But this is the beginning of our contribution to recruiting doctors. And if you see Andy Kobel up there in the right-hand corner, he was a medic for us for 17 years, and went back to medical school and came back to Harrison as a general surgeon. This is the reach of our hospital. We have clinics in Marshall, Jasper, and Lead Hill. We have ambulance stations in Marshall, Jasper, and Lead Hill. And we have our clinics here in the city. We provide that ambulance service to those communities. We have our service area of about 85,000 people, and we service those areas with our ambulance service in there. We're really the only medical care in the Marshall area. So that's kind of an interesting slide there. I want to show you something else here that'll be interesting for you to look at. These are the namesakes for us. Claude Parish is a building that was purchased, but built by Claude Parish, and that's up in Lead Hill. We operate that clinic right there in the military. Dick Kennedy Family Practices, been down there a long time. Dr. James Justice is down there, and Dr. Brad Allen's down in Marshall. This is the way the organization looks in 2001 when I came here. This was an information system slide that I put together, so we could try to figure out how we were going to put the information systems and doctors' offices in the hospital together. This is the way it looks today. We have incorporated many of the physicians here in town. We employ about 65% of physicians here in town. And we have connected, we were the first member of the Health Information Exchange that was presented by the state, so we're going to grant to do that. So we are part of a health information exchange that ties all of our systems together. E-Clinical Works or ECW is a system we use in our physicians' offices. We use Meditech in the hospital. But again, at the end of the day, it's all about the patients, and we provide a fair amount of services, and we've developed a fair amount of services here since I've been here. On the left-hand side, there's two new radiologists, two board certified radiologists who are recruited here in Harrison. Highly trained guys, well-respected, and we're very lucky to have them. On the right-hand side of that slide, talks a little bit about our relationship with Airepak. And we've integrated a lot of our services between our ambulance service and Airepak by using the same kinds of equipment, the same monitors, the same ID pumps, so we can transfer somebody from one place to another quickly without having to, you probably will apologize for what we're doing there. On the left-hand side is Raytion Therapy Institute. The center slide is to depict our stroke program. We're a member of Arkansas State, which is a program in which we can treat, we can diagnose a patient in an emergency room, hook up to a Tandberg unit or a video/audio system, connect an emergency room with a stroke-trained neurologist in the state of Arkansas, and we can administer TPO clot busting therapy right here in our emergency room, which would be the same treatment you'd get in any tertiary center. On the right-hand side is the facility we have in our radiology department. We've got state-of-the-art radiology imaging, 64-slice CT, 1.5 MR, the whole shoot. So the laboratory on the left-hand side, state-of-the-art systems there, Siemens systems, analyzers are state-of-the-art. In the center, we talk a lot about our nursing staff. We've improved our nursing staff quality by major, we've been awarded several times for the work that we're doing. On the right-hand side, of course, there's Dr. Sedanian. I bet you, he's probably gotten most of you in the room, at least once. He's already operated on me twice, so he's a great surgeon, really a strong part of our program down there. The left-hand side talks a little bit about our wound care unit. The center is a picture, see that little chamber that patients' things slid into? That's our hyperbaric unit that you have downstairs in the lower part of the system. We do wound care, hyperbaric oxygen therapy in the lower level of the hospital. Again, we talk a little bit about our relationship here. We moved that helicopter on site down there just to speed up transport. So they'll fly over and land on the hospital, and it takes just a few minutes to do that, and they're coming out the other from the outside of town. It also gives us access, if there are a helicopter there, we can go directly there if we have a trauma patient, he's getting out of there without going to our emergency room. Again, this was a rendition of that building in town, and the beginning of the process of development there. I want to tell you a little bit about our hospital. We service 10 counties. We count about 100,000 people in those counties. Our ambulance service will run 8,000 times this year. So that means 8,901 calls are going to come into our system, and we're going to provide those services. Our logistics center down there, if there ever's a operating issue, it's an S-Call, and then we'll move in that thing. Inside, it's all done. Health Race Ratings. This is a system that rates hospitals and compares them on an even basis of objective data from patient charts. And we have been five stars, which is the highest level you can get for a number of years, in hip replacement, knee replacement, patient medical procedures, and the treatment of pneumonia. So we've won a fair amount of awards in New York, equal to or better than many of the hospitals in the country in these services. Also, we are a 90th percentile for our patient overall patient satisfaction, so we've got a pretty darn good group of people down there, training patients very well. This is something I want to tell you about. This is an EICU, or electronic ICU. This is a system where we have eight rooms in our hospital, connected to Baptist Medical Center, where they have intensivists on staff 24 hours a day. So the way it used to be, when you go to the hospital, if you were in the hospital and got sick in the middle of the night, the nurse had to call the doctor. The doctor'd have to air-sleep, and you had to get in his car and drive up to the hospital to take care of you. Well, in this particular case, there's a red button on the wall, and you have to hit that button. And within just about a couple of minutes, there's a stroke, or a trained neurologist, a trained intensivist that comes on the screen. You can see him looking at that TV screen. There's a big camera on top of that. Our electronic information system and all the monitors in the room are transmitted to Baptists, and they will intervene on that patient before the doctor near town gets there. It's saved a fair amount of people's lives. This patient right here is being tested for stroke. We're trying to determine whether he has a stroke. If he does, we'll connect him with that stroke-trained neurologist, and we're going to treat him.
Was that after Razorback game or something?
It could have been. Maybe the Razorback game caused his stroke. And we'll deliver about 900 babies this year. So now, this is a list, this is the message I need to send you guys. There's a bunch of familiar names up there on that screen. These are the doctors that this hospital has recruited over the last four years. They've been brought to town, they're all busy. Here's really the basic strategic plan for the hospital. If I can get the doctors to move here, they'll bring the patients. The patients will pay their bills, and raise some revenue, and we can build some infrastructure. It's a very simple process. And if you want to watch a hospital in its last days, just look at Barrio. There's no doctors there, and the hospital's not. Matter of fact, we opened a clinic in Barrio and hired one of the doctors that worked there. So if you drive through Barrio now, you'll see our logo over there on the clinic that we put up to try to take care of this patient. And it kind of remains that we see what's going to happen with our ambulance service here, who's struggling to produce anything again. The key message here is, I need to bring more doctors to town. Need to recruit about seven to 10 more. Why? To meet the need, but second, to deal with some of the guys who are getting ready to retire. There's some guys that have been around a long time, that are at the end of their careers, and they're not going to replace themselves. It leaves the hospital to do that for them. This list is a list of providers that we currently employ. So we have, these are on staff, they're employees in the hospital, and we have a relationship with them, and we put up clinics all over town for them to work here. Hospital has about 800 employees right now, almost 200 volunteers, and we put about $37 million in salaries in the nursing of Arkansas. So we have an obligation to the community to provide high-level care, but think of what Harrison, Arkansas would look like absent the 800 jobs and $37 million in salaries. Do you have a ready for picture? So what I'm trying to do with this project I want to show you is to make sure that there's healthcare here in 45 years. I want to make sure that we have the facilities to do that. This is, on the right-hand side, you can very familiar sight, this is the way the hospital looks today. On the left-hand side is the building that I'm going to propose that we build. This is a project. That will be a 36,000 square foot building, will house 36 physicians. We don't have enough physicians to put in it if I can continue recruiting as we do. And if I can get two new doctors to come to town, it's easier to get three. I got 15, it's easier to get 16. Because if we treat them right, set up a program here where they're successful, they're going to continue to come to Harrison, Arkansas. I've always said, if I find a physician who's finishing a residency that wants to hunt the fish, I win. What we're trying to do here is, I'll tell you how this project came together. I've gotten this, these documents put together for the purpose of try and understand whether, first of all, we can afford it. The cost of the building, distributed over the rent rate for those facilities that would be in there, is going to be acceptable for a local market. So what happens next? I'm going to send this concept out to several design builders, and let them have a look and see what they can do. And if they can improve it, if they can reduce the overall projected cost, we're going to try to make that happen. But the location right there is going to be probably the best for our community, because they can, patients can come see their doctor and get their treatments in the hospital if they wish. Next thing we're going to have to do is figure out finance. I've already notified the county that we're thinking about selling tax-exempt bonds. We're talking to local banks, we're going to send a request for information out for just a flat loan, because it's not cheap to sell bonds. Then we have, we've been very fortunate with the development of Arkansas Works and now Pride of Option, now Arkansas Works, that we have been very fortunate that our state saw fit to expand Medicaid. And I'll tell you why. I went, I was a medic in Tuskegee, Kansas, I was an extratechnologist in Tuskegee, Kansas. There were two large facilities there that I worked with. I found out yesterday that one large facility is 303-bed hospital on downtown Tuskegee, Kansas, and closed. But why is that? Because they didn't expand that again. It's a classic case of, you can't, if you're losing on everything, piece you do, you can't make it up on volume. So Arkansas is very fortunate to pass that. What I'm going to do now is move forward with this. Our board has already approved the concept of removing pricing, approved, sending it out to several builders. But I wanted to let you guys know, first of all, what's the message today? To demonstrate the need, demonstrate the need to continue to recruit doctors to Harrison, Arkansas, and when you're recruiting to Harrison, Arkansas, it'll be a good place to work. I've got two guys showing up in July, and I have no place to put them. A gentleman named Ross Halsted, and then a different man, he's kind of over here from Mount Col. And I've got a guy named Ross, Greg Ross, who's coming back to Harrison. So I've been very fortunate to recruit folks to come back here. I've got another anesthesiologist coming in July, his name is DeSena. So I've got several agreements out with folks supporting them through their residency to come back here again. And like I said, you got seven to 10 more, and I have no place to put them. So I wanted to inform you guys. I'm not asking for anything, I just wanted to tell you why we're doing it, so if you hear that we're doing something like this, that you understand the issues and the reasons for it. May I answer questions? Yes, sir.
The structure you're showing there, obviously, the ride is the part of the kids that build. Are you talking about complete demolition of the building section?
No, sir, I've got a whole bunch of services in that section as well. But I really want the position this building, well, there's a couple of reasons, and I'll show you when we move forward. If we look at the way the building is positioned, it'll have underneath, the first level will be wide open for parking and drop-off area. The reason we positioned the building in this place was because it would build a building cheaper. If I shared the elevator talent, it would be strictly there with this building, it'd reduce by one elevator. Plus, you have fire escapes on that end of the building with the hospital, it will reduce the cost there. And plus, it would be a great way for the hospital, doctors in the hospital to interact, put all the surgeons on the second floor, and they'll walk across and do their surgery. So, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. I don't know what else to bring. There we go.
That gosh, yeah.
May I answer any other question?
So that's going to be in front of the current structure that's there now?
Yes. It'll sit right on Berdismar, where they found this today.
You said it would hold 36 doctors.
Yes, I'll show you a couple of things there. If you look at the little wedge section out that's in the white, that'll be a common waiting, common reception. And each one of these sections will house full of doctors. So we'll be able to combine the reception staff, combine the nursing staff, and have enough examiners to receive doctors.
Did you anticipate part of the doctors that are already here moving into this facility?
Yes, ma'am. The building that we have behind the hospital, I've got too many physicians on that top floor. They need to move out of there. I've got two intensivists that I'm going to move down in the lower section. And Dr. Chancy has a new partner coming, so we'll give the whole lower floor to him. And I'll move Mediquik back up to the top floor of that building, so we'll have Mediquik in that building. Then I've got facilities rented in several places in town, and I'll bring those doctors back to the hospital. Questions? Thank you for allowing me to introduce.
I think we're all behind you, and you're a great asset to our community, I know that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, none of this has changed in our agenda. I'm going to get up on this one, so, sorry. Mr. Leese just presented something up there on some new TVs, and we've been actually looking into this program, well, since I've been in office. I don't know what y'all think about it, but I kind of like it. And our young people here, they've been experimenting with it, and they've kind of gone crazy a bit, so it all works out well. But, to get this on board, I want, Chris, why don't you bring the few of you have up here, and I want to present you with a little certificate here. We would not have been able to get these without these folks right here. Walmart donated $2,000 to the cause, and we went out there and spent that money real fast. But I want to give you a little certificate of appreciation, and it says, "Awarded to Walmart Harrison in recognition of the public service to the city of Harrison, protecting all the upgrades to the Walmart Community Grant Program." I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll get into the regular agenda there. Oh, okay, we have a minute to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes.
If they have a motion to approve, March 5th, any discussion? There'll be no discussion, all in favor by height, on the vote saying? Okay, we're going to get down into partner reports, and one of these here, Wade's going to cover probably just three out of here. He's got some other, he's got some other information in front of me on them. Wade, I'm going to more or less turn it over to you right now.
Well, I wanted to take the opportunity to update you on a few things dealing with the water system. One being the CCR report for 2016. That is our Consumer Confidence Report that we have to do every year. It's an EPA requirement where we send out info to all of our customers, letting them know what our regulatory testing results were for the year, as well as letting them know if we had any violations. 2016, we had no violations, so it was a good year. Which, that's typical for us. These CCRs will go out, and all of the bills, it's available on the website, and each of you have a copy there. And we'll actually hand it, we'll deliver it into certain customer school districts, nursing homes, etc., kind of more, I guess, critical facilities when it comes to water. Just a quick summary, there were no detected microbiological contaminants in the system. Fluoride levels were well below the limits established by the EPA. Nitrites, again, very low. Chlorine was well below limits, however, we use it as a residual disinfectant, so we don't want it to get too low. It's one of those deals that we have to have it in the water at some level, but we can't get above that four parts per million. The .08 up there, I don't like. I'd like to never see it get to .05, but it's just something that we struggle.
Is that due to different locations in town? I read that.
Yeah. If you get to the south, you're going to see lower chlorine, it's just because the water's, it's older. And it's an issue that we have, because we're at the townway with the Carol Boone's water system, so our water is by far the oldest that gets here, and they can't add enough chlorine at the plant to keep us where we would really like to be without overcoating it near each and every one. Last two items are disinfection byproducts. You've got halocytic acids and total trihalomethanes. Those are fairly recent regulatory requirements to watch those. In the last five to 10 years is when that's really become an issue. And those further complicate maintaining chlorine residues, because the more chlorine you add to, the more disinfection byproducts you get, because those are, those are products of when the chlorine reacts in the water system and it breaks down. Fortunately, everything looks really good from the standpoint of our regulatory requirements on the limits for what we have to pay attention to. So with that, I'm going to move into LCR compliance. LCR stands for the lead and copper rule, it was adopted by the EPA in 1991. It uses action levels instead of limits. And by action level, that means once we, sea levels reach a certain threshold, we're required to take further steps. Lead, it's 15 parts per million, I'm sorry, it's 0.15 parts per million, that's 15 parts per billion. Copper is 1.3 parts per million, and everything's based off of the 90th percentile. So in any of your testing, if you see your 90th percentile above one of those thresholds, that's when you've got to take further steps. The primary source of lead and copper in drinking water is actually from corrosion and household plumbing. We started seeing indications of our lead levels exceeding the action level at 90th percentile back in 2014. Everything has looked good for copper. That's never been an issue. So what we did, starting in 2015, was we increased our monitoring at the tap. We now do 120 samples at customer taps annually, send those to the health department. We also do additional samples taken directly from our water system, so we can get an idea of if we're looking at issues with household plumbing, if we're looking at issues in water. We still have 90th percentile lead levels above that action level, so we are continuing with the compliance actions that we have to do. And each of you have some very large pieces of paper. I want you to take a look at those. These did not fit well on the slide, so I gave you paper. The green numbers, the large pieces are summary of all the samples we've taken from customer taps, 2014 up to the most recent that we've received results for. Numbers that are highlighted in green are at or below the limits of detection. That's, we can't determine anything lower than what those are. Blue means that, you know, it can be detected, but it's below the action. And red is the numbers that are above the action level. 14.6% of our samples taken from customer taps, 2014 to now, have been above the action level. If you look on the back, there's a smaller piece of paper stapled to the back. That is a summary of samples taken directly from our water system. You will see that it is almost all running with just a little bit of blue. No sample pulled directly from the water system has even really approached the action level, and 94% of those have been either below the level of detection. We're going to continue with the compliance requirements from the EPA. We'll have to keep doing our public outreach, close PSAs, we'll be putting bill inserts into our bills that we've done every year since this has started. We'll continue to increase monitoring. The next big step is implementing what is known as optimal corrosion control. We have until November of 2018 to have that in place. I had approached the council last year for the approval to install a zinc orthophosphate injection system in order to, as a corrosion inhibitor, and that would be, that would meet the optimal corrosion control requirements from the EPA. Last year, middle of last year, we had already had a plumering plan set, and we're moving forward to what we're going to do. I received notification that our water provider, Carol Boone, was actually starting the discussions for doing optimal corrosion control themselves. At that point, I tangled everything up and working, because what they do, what they end up doing could affect what we do. And even worse, what they do could negatively impact, if we'd already started doing zinc orthophosphate, and they did something to severely change the water chemistry, it could cause real problems. So we kind of had to back up and pump and see what they were going to do. A plumerage study was presented to the Carol Boone Board in January of this year. The recommendation was to use pH adjustment in lieu of any type of orthophosphate. Some of the other member cities have phosphorus issues with their wastewater permits, and so adding an orthophosphate, whether it's a zinc orthophosphate or some other type of blend, can actually increase what they're seeing in phosphorus wastewater clear, and can cause them problems. The board authorized completion of the study, and told their engineers, the project cost high bills, and they brought it back. And they brought it back at the last board meeting, which was last week, presented those final recommendations on how to get this done, what it would cost, and the board approved them and moved forward. Just a summary of what they're doing, they are going to adjust the pH from, currently we're around 7.2, plus or minus it fluctuates throughout the year, especially depending on temperatures, up to 8.4. That is, when you get up in the 8.2 to 8.6 range based off of our water chemistry, that would be the optimal pH for preventing corrosion in our water system. They'll be doing this primarily through lime slurry, which is an industry standard for investment pH in water treatment, although they may not be able to get all the way up to the target pH, so they will use a secondary chemical, caustic soda, if necessary and as necessary. Their estimated capital cost is $330,000, with an estimated annual cost of $55,000. They anticipate that they're gonna increase their rates to do this by one to two pence per thousand gallons that they sell. All four cities have, all four member cities have met with Carol Boone. Everybody has expressed acceptance of essential rate increases, because they all understand that the corrosion control's gonna be necessary for all of us.
And again, it's not our system, it's the pipes within the structure that pass to our system that's the corrosion issue.
Yes. We do have corrosion in our system, so in the side benefit, this will help reduce some of our corrosion, but as far as the lead leaching into the water system, based off of the samples we've taken and just historical information studied across the country, the primary source that's coming from.
But based on this slide that you showed, it's primarily not a water system, it's a home business.
Yeah, and I, the sheets I gave you remove the addresses from the site besides. Each one of those people, when they have their water tested, they're given the information, so it's it's their information, I'm not gonna put that out publicly. But I can tell you that, I can tell you that we have neighbors that will sometimes pop up on this. One will have lead above the action level, the other won't even have to detect the levels of lead, so. And it's, and I've got, I've actually got all this map from our aerial, so we can look at it. There's no hot spots, there's nothing that we look at and say, there's a specific problem, we gotta start digging to see what's going on. Benefits of pH adjustment, there's quite a few. Obviously, for the corrosion control, it decreases the solubility of lead, so even whenever we've got high lead plumbing instances, it's gonna be harder for the lead to dissolve into the water. Helps maintain disinfectant residue, it goes back to something I mentioned earlier about our chlorine residue, that .08. Really hoping that is one of those effects that we see as we move forward with this. And also, the DVP stands for disinfection byproduct. It reduces the production of DVPs in the system, especially with chlorines, which is what we use for our disinfectant. Negative, obviously, it's gonna cost more money to do this. Some studies have shown a potential increase of the TTHM disinfection byproduct, but those studies focused mainly on chlorine systems instead of chlorines. So Carol Boone's engineers and I agree with them, I'm confident that that's not gonna be an issue with us. Tentative timeline, bottom line, substantial completion is expected in February of 2018, that's when the system should go online. They are not going to adjust the pH from 7.2 to 8.4 overnight. They're gonna do that information over a period of a few months. And just another step is, we've got customers that maybe, you know, they have processes or they may have need to know exactly what the pH is, because they may be sensitive to that in some way and process that they use. We'll be putting that information out to the customers, such as the hospital, as soon as we can finish that, so I can catch my just so they're aware that this is coming and what the standard is.
Wade, you have a question? With the introduction of, and using this term mostly, other things, chemicals being put in the water, and we're gonna get some questions about this, is there any cause that anyone is going to need to put filters on their waters, or filter out the tap?
No, lime slurry is what they're gonna, is primarily what they're gonna use for the pH adjustment. They have actually, that is a, that's a process they've used in the past at Carol Boone for pH adjustment, so that's nothing new to the system.
So it's safe, basically?
Oh, yeah.
Because you know we're gonna get some questions.
The vast majority of systems that do corrosion control use some form of lime for pH adjustment, at least as part of their process.
I'll change the case.
Possibly. Some people that have a very sensitive palate may actually think the water tastes a little bit sweeter as the pH goes up. That's interesting, I'm not sure my palate's that sensitive, so. This, the pH that we're, that they're gonna be adjusting to is actually similar to the types of pH that Beaver Water District puts out for all of Northwest Arkansas, as well as Two-Tone over there. Central Arkansas, I believe, runs these similar pHs, and it's all primarily a corrosion control measure. I think they've been putting this slide in, because I don't want to minimize the importance of trying to reduce lead levels in drinking water, it is a major issue in the US today. But with it being a major issue, there comes a lot of misinformation, fear mongering, and things like that. A lot of people out there wanna profit off of people's fear of this. This graph is from the American Academy of PPA. It shows blood lead levels in one- to five-year-olds in the US from 1976 up to 2008. Those are steep declines. All of us in this room were drinking water when that was really a lot higher than what, or not, when blood levels were a lot higher than they are today. The primary cause for that is actually the, this drop is the stopping the use of lead gas water. That was one of the biggest indicators, as well as the implication of the lead copper rule with the EPA and banning lead paint from residential use. Those are the three main occurrences that happen in a steep decline. So I just kinda wanted to, want everybody to understand that our exposure, our kids' exposure, the grandkids' exposure to lead is exponentially less than what any of us felt we're going. So while this may be a lot of work and a lot of effort to continue to work on the regs, this does show that there's been a lot of improvement, and it's come from concerted efforts to remove and to limit the exposure to lead. But at the same time, I just, I wanted people to see that we don't have this mass issue with people being exposed to high levels of lead across the country.
Wade?
Yes?
If the, this upgrade that they're gonna do, even though these tests were done from the tap inside the house against a demarked location, just inside the house, does that, will they see any benefit internally in their house if we can win this upgrade?
Yeah, that's.
Or spill over into that?
See, they'll still have the higher pH, which will provide the corrosion control within their plumbing. That's why, that's why optimal corrosion control, whether it be through a pH adjustment or through a corrosion inhibitor, which is what we originally looked at as one of the most ideal solutions to this, because it actually, it's something that we can do that will help the situation on the customer side of the unit. We can't go in and make them change their plumbing. We certainly don't wanna go in and change it ourselves. So this is something that we can actually do in order to provide that benefit across all parts of the system to the tap.
And we should see some improvement, I think you told me that there's gonna be some infrastructure upgrades with lines, right, coming up here to Harrison West area this summer this year? Was there some, was there some new lines or something?
We've got several new lines, I'm working on.
Should that, we should see any improvement there, or did it?
I don't think our replacement of our lines is going to benefit this issue, simply because we've not seen, we've got any indication of elevated blood levels actually in the water system itself. Only if there might be some minor impact just with newer lines, there's less chlorine decay that means the pH stays more stable, can help prevent a little bit of corrosion, but all of all that would be extremely minimal and probably not be noticeable.
Any of the filter systems that people buy, like the Briton and all the others, would that remove any of this?
Of the lead?
Well, no, not with the lead, anything that, that is putting in there for the mitigation of the lead or I mean, you see it's supposedly removes the 99% of contaminants or whatever, but are those even, I'm just asking out of curiosity, are they even worth having? I've never had one, I've never had one, I'll probably never, that's the best way I can do it.
You buy a bottle of water?
Well, I, it's a dad, but I've never had the tap, I'll go on the filter.
We got some of the best water?
It's kinda like your air filter, you know, better you get the less supposed stuff that takes out, so.
If we were a system that was having regular issues with microbiological contamination or some other type of issue, then yeah, there would certainly be a benefit to that.
Well, I mean, you don't have to go, you can just drive anywhere instead of Arkansas, and the water's not as clean as it is here, I mean, deeper white water is incredibly clean.
It is, it is, and Carol Boone, where their location, their untake is absolutely the best part. They've got, we've got one of the best sources. Our, the clarity of the water that Carol Boone pulls is many times better to begin with than what Beaver Water District gets or even Two-Tone, which are the other two major districts that pull water off of Beaver Water.
Well, that, the deeper lake watershed that we were presented here, it is a huge deal over there right now. I spent a little bit of time over there recently, and there's ads everywhere for it and a Costa reminder of those programs.
Yeah, they've put a lot of effort up there into protecting Beaver, Beaver Water. And Beaver Water District has been a significant player in their effort, so they recognize the value of their resource and they wanna protect it as much as they can. Any other questions? There's some info up there about some sources, good sources to go if you just wanna read about it and learn a little bit about lead in drinking water and really other exposures to lead in our environment as well. So from that, I will move on to the second item, but I've got all the directives up there. We have been approached by Ozark County, they're in town, to place an antenna on our Skyline Elevator that gets the one with the gobbler hanging on with the leg turn. We have a proposed lease rate of $300 per month. I'll need council authorization from Mayor and myself to enter into a lease agreement with the and we'll also have to, everything has to be reviewed by Ben, and then there'll be a few other conditions. They'll have to sue the plants, and we make sure what they're doing doesn't pose any threat to the integrity of the county, but ultimately, I do need council authorization for us to move forward with this.
And that will have to be in the resolution form, I don't think that resolution may have been made yet, but we have it.
Do we know the content of the broadcast?
Okay. We have Mr. Mickey Kline here representing, right there at you. Mickey, if you could come on up here, if I have some questions ready for you.
Thank you. Basically, we're a community radio station, non-profit radio station. We've been programming with classic rock music format, concentrating basically on what's happening in town, away from, you know, car crashes and fires and that kinda thing, talking more about the events and progress that are making it here in town. And basically, the reason we're wanting to move our antennas is so that we can get a better pattern from where we're located now.
They are a, oh, we're watching.
Where's the antenna?
Right now, it's over where the CB26 is, at Dan Mann's building.
Down here?
Yes. We've got, we've got a good pattern, you know, depending on what radio you're on and what hillside you're on when you're listening in, we can hear ourselves on the other side of Green Forest. By moving the antennas to the water tower, it'll almost double the pattern.
Without increasing your wattage?
In fact, the wattage will come down. Right now, we're pushing 260 watts to achieve our 100-watt rating, and by making this move, we'll actually come all the way down to about 35 to 40 watts. So we'll be using less than what a light bulb would be using.
What's the station frequency?
100.7.
100.7?
Yes.
I've heard your voice now, but I think I've heard your voice on radio, it's like Bill Bob's voice, it's like, there. Every time I have council, I always tell people, shut that radio off.
I was just gonna ask if that was a good thing.
But we have not worked out actual lease drill, the actual lease itself, we don't have that. But it's a council call at this time.
I have a question, why is this just now being brought to our attention? Why was it not included in the community?
Because it was last week when we realized that they needed to get this going with council. We weren't aware of, we weren't aware of their schedule or need to report what's going on when we had to do it.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
I have a motion on the table to approve.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? We will present you all when we have the lease, we will make sure you have a copy of that list.
And we're voting for, right now?
Authorizing them to go ahead and, Wade and I, to sign that lease. That's what you're authorizing.
Is there any competitive issues with other radio stations?
Our station is so small, there's no way we can compete with the others anyhow. I don't think that tank would provide the location, location, and intersection we're looking for. Although, if I wanted to approach us, we would certainly discuss. It's, leasing antennas on water tanks is a pretty common social reality in water systems.
I have a lot of non-profits that, I was just gonna say, the non-profits that's in community relations. I think that would probably come with any of the other groups, so I should, I'll call them.
How long is the lease agreement we're looking at?
The building that we're planning to take over, we're looking at a five-year lease there.
Typically, also looked at, you would be looking at a five-year initial lease with, at that, and then after that, let's see if it's renewable or if we can really go up there.
We won't go out over five years.
No.
Hey, any further discussion? There being none, I will call, we'll vote, all of them cleared by?
Aye.
All of them polled sign?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take it all.
Okay, we'll just give the deliverables.
One more item, which did not come through committee as well, but unfortunately, this happened last week. We had a packing blowout or fail at a valve at Main West Station. As you can see there, every time that pump station runs, it spews wastewater. We've got, we have contained now, because it's, it's not enough volume that we can't just pump it back to the well and keep things going there. But we're gonna have trouble doing the work we need to. We've got three options, we can tear down and replace the packing new valve, it's an old valve, I'm not sure that's really a good option. Remove the valve, put in a brand-new one. Or third option is basically remove the old valve and install a pipe spool. Or third option is basically remove the old valve and install a pipe spool. That valve serves absolutely no purpose in the operation of that pump station. I've tried to come up with several ideas why they put that in when they built that many years ago, and I've not come up with a good one, certainly not to justify the cost of the sixteen-inch valve. Today, replacing that would probably be about a sixteen thousand dollar valve because of the length of it is, it would require a custom. So what we want to do is remove it and install a pipe spool. Another big problem, we do not have a downstream valve in order to isolate that pump station off of the force main. So there's several thousand feet of force main full of wastewater, and as soon as we crack that valve and we're trying to take it off, we'll all flow back down to that force.
That is wastewater.
And it will be completely unfiltered wastewater. That's something that we can't contain, there's no way we can, we can do this repair.
Okay, Wade, you've got a sheet here on the call back room.
I do, I do. The solution we have is to go just outside the lift station, put in what's called an insertable valve. We will drill into the side of that force main while it's in operation. Everything will be clamped over, tightened up, and then this is kind of, this is a picture of a very similar valve to what we want to put in. And so what it does is it has that basically, simple terms of plug, that when we want to close it, it'll go down and it'll seal off that entire pipe room. So once we put that in, then we can seal it off, get in and do the work. That is an expensive valve. That is, that is an installed cost. The quote we have right now is from Interstate Traffic Service. We've got repair money for doing this stuff, just pump stations remain tanked out of wastewater treatment plan budget. And so I'm not asking for a budget adjustment, but with it being over twenty-four thousand dollars, I need a labor. To not go through the competitive bid process. Just a couple of reasons why it is an emergency situation. If that worsens and it gets to the point that we cannot contain that wastewater and get it back to the well, then when I say environmental issue, I mean any EQ and fines is what we're looking at there. The process would have at least three weeks, probably more, to the timeline to get this done. And these valves, they take a little bit of notice. So the reality is, I need to order this valve four or five days ago. With being the price it is, I have to wait until I can get the council. Requires ordering ordinance to make the...
Is ready, everybody should have.
I'll make a motion to approve the man, whoever.
A second.
Okay. We'll make a motion to approve the ordinance. Because it is an ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll second.
It was first written, how long?
Good. Okay. An ordinance approving the waiver of bidding requirement for the purchase of a specially wastewater valve and declaring emergency. Okay, I'll have to have a clerk call the roll. This is the one reading ordinance.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Osmol?
Yes.
We'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Okay.
All in favor by?
Aye.
Or opposed, same? Okay, I'll entertain a...
I'll make a motion to emergency. For the emergency call?
Second.
Motion and a second for emergency calls, any discussion on that? All in favor by?
Aye.
Or opposed, same? Thank you, Wade.
Thank you.
Well, Wade's up here, we work really well.
Well...
That's a lot. I can see that, I'm just curious. No money, reject that.
Probably looking thirty-four.
Yeah, we'll give you a little break while we get back in there. We're gonna get a gesture of pride from that, so.
I put some financials out there on the Google Docs, just kind of an update. The sales taxes, almost exact same as what we had last year. The local is up just a tad, and county is down just a tad as well. More than what the other thing wasn't big enough, that doesn't work out too well. The general fund, we did have that loss of fifty thousand, it was more than that last month. You'll see that fluctuation, we should, about September, start to see that really kind of creep over the surplus line, just a reminder of that. We're still over the cash reserves of three million in six months, which is our ideal goal. Our water and sewer funds, we have a citizen debt income there of thirty thousand. We do have a bad service payment that we've made, which knocks it into a negative cash flow, but all in all, it's still a healthy fund. And fire police, we're just short of breakeven, they were really close, that's kind of what you want to see, and especially for the first few months with them, that's when they buy a lot of their new equipment, and everything goes in the first four, three or four months. So you'll probably see that again next month, maybe even a little decrease, but that, that's expected. Other than that, our property taxes are up, franchise fees are down, that's kind of why that remains a little bit stagnant there. Our franchise fees, I'll work on this sheet too for next time, so that's a little bigger, maybe just a slide with it all on there. Franchise fees being down, it's not that normal. Entergy was down, source gas was up. Again, you play that, that game of if it's, you have a milder winter, you know, sometimes, or if you have a colder winter, they're both about the same, they go up and down, just kind of like your own utility bills. Source gas will be down, your energy bill will be up, vice versa, on the opposite side. Other than that, I don't have a lot more on March financials. Do you guys want to go into December? Is that, do you want to wait on that? Or if you guys...
I'll have you, and then we'll be switching over to Mr. Magnus, and if he wants to, go ahead and go.
Do you guys have any other questions on March financials, I should ask that.
You know I've had all the questions tonight. Okay, nobody's got any question for him, we'll go into committees. Go, do you have anything you want to bring with?
Not yet.
We're getting down to Mr. Magnus.
Okay. Two items in finance, one is the approval, the first is the approval of the two thousand sixteen financials. Again, we discussed this at committee, but to make everyone's point of view, we had a surplus in general fund this year of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars. Second year, a third, second year here that we've had a surplus in general fund. Commend the city, department heads for keeping the cost under control, and an overall surplus throughout the city due to the infrastructure tax, that's primarily three point two me. Surplus, and that speaks well to the financial health, obviously, there's a project that to use out of the infrastructure fund, but again, just point out that it's important that we continue that surplus and use the taxpayers' money as that is... With that, I would make a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen financials.
I have a motion and a second to approve. This being a resolution, it actually is a resolution that we need in the budget for two thousand sixteen.
I make a motion to approve the resolution of the budget adjustment.
Do not add a second, I have a second. Any further discussion?
This is... Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I got a question.
Yes.
I stopped by today and actually asked Luke some questions about this, and I forgot one question. He was able to answer everything that was, that all made a lot of sense. Mitch or Luke, I guess, we've got a total reserve of around fifteen million. Where is that? Where is our...
Well, we've got over three in the general fund, Luke starts slapping.
But where is it? Is it in the bank?
It's in the bank, in the bank.
Under, just sitting there in a checking account?
It's in it, it's in checking accounts, different checking accounts depending on the different parts, the different funds. It all is collateralized by the bank. We just hold that in different accounts based off the funds, that way we can track it better.
So we don't have any investments in the fifteen million, non-his investment, so we're no interest at all in the fifteen million?
We have just a hair shade under a one percent interest right now.
Okay, fifteen different banks, you say, or?
It's all one.
It's all in one bank?
Yeah, we make sure it's all collateralized. We did that just before I got here.
And what bank is that?
It is Equity Bank.
Equity Bank?
Yes.
Used to be Community First Bank.
When, when kind of the downturn in the economy happened, we put it, we put it out the bid, and we got the highest quote of interest rate from, at the time, Community First Bank, and that's where we put it all in there.
Okay.
Okay. Well, being no further discussion, all in favor of this resolution?
Aye. Aye.
Or opposed, same?
Next item, Mr. Mayor's approval was the water two audit. Not much there, Luke.
I kind of talked about it last time. I felt really good about the comments that were made, there were just a few. You guys still have any questions on that? Most of it was internal controls, of which we're trying to mitigate. We've had the mayor start signing off and looking at all the bankruptations. That's been one of the issues. I've been approached by a couple people offering to help on that as well. People looking at what happens to see what we can accomplish.
No major finding, same issue.
Yeah, segregation of dues.
Right.
And I think that's, I don't know, they must have a stamp down there or something.
Yes, they do. Was that my... Was that, I'll make a motion to approve the water two audit, does that need to be by regulations? Whatever.
Just a motion.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I mean, then all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed, same?
That is all my clients.
I have all the papers up here, I have all. Anyway, okay. Mr. Wilson, do you have anything out of your?
Nothing.
Mr. Krieger?
My department's so good.
Okay.
I will say, I've mentioned this in committee, so I want to go and mention it to council as well, the reports that you all submit are really helpful to go through. I appreciate that. Statistics go by, if somebody makes a comment about something, I'm always gonna...
Very interesting.
It's very interesting. Fire policy you've had and the number of times that we've had, kind of connection with the public, it's amazing.
Well, you know, you talked about, Mr. Lee's talked about that, ambulance calls that goes out, I guess that's every time nine-one-one is called, I guess an ambulance goes out, is that right? Or is it just fire and police, the nine-one-one call?
It depends on the call.
Oh, really?
If it's medical, the ambulance, there's injuries with it, your rescue go out, and then we'll go, if it's an injury, it really depends on the call.
Okay, Mr. Osmol, now to you guys.
We've got two items that we're getting out of committee. Wade, would you like to repeat the first one, it's a hundred thousand dollar fight first?
I have a question in mind, that was a hundred thousand dollars that we had planned actually spent out of the two thousand sixteen budget for the NARNC pipe rush project, project, just to move along, get through the process, get through, move it to approve. So we ended up, that entire cost is coming out of two thousand seventeen, so the request is for a hundred thousand dollar budget adjustment for the sewer department.
Thanks, our committee, I'm just... I have a motion to approve the hundred thousand dollar revenue adjustment for the pipe first.
Second, that, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? There been none, all in favor by?
Aye.
Or opposed, same? Or if you care.
My second item up is the purchase of a used front loader that are currently not being able to maintain its job at the station.
Yeah, it's pretty low to the point to use.
Is that from the transmissions out?
Yes.
And we get a trade-in, right?
We got a little bit of a trade-in.
Two thousand?
Yeah.
And the tires.
Yeah, we, the tires we got on ours are better than the one in the Bonn's we're actually... Small pictures.
So I guess I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I'm gonna have to have you back up, sorry. This will have to be in an ordinance form, and it'll be a one reading ordinance. You can make a motion to put it on its first and only reading by title of...
Motion. It's a first and only reading by title of...
Second, that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. An ordinance approving the waiver of bidding requirements for purchase or trade for used case wheel loader and declaring emergency. Okay, I'll have a clerk call the roll, please.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
David Wilson?
Yes.
Ryan Osmol?
Yes.
Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
So who? Second.
A motion for adoption. And a second, any discussion?
We, now, I want to point out again, the reason we did that is, I mean, to take that piece of equipment, it's not to be available unless you jump on, I think, correct?
Correct, and it's really a possible against a bid process for used corporate.
But also, like I say, we were kind of concerned it might not be available if we're ready to be counseled.
Correct.
So I just wanted to ask, point out, so that someone said...
Actually, you gotta be...
Well, once it made it through committee, I started the gun shift, we actually started the gun shift on the mid-Friday, it came through Monday after Easter, so...
I just want to make sure that it's official, that we did that, that it's important that we, that's a good use of the facts.
Okay, I have a motion on the table, any further discussion? All in favor of motion?
Aye. Aye.
Or opposed, same? Now, enter... Production merger call.
Second.
Motion for merger calls, and a second, any discussion? There been none, all in favor by?
Aye.
Or opposed, same? Okay, Mrs. Taylor, boy, we went through your stuff out of committee, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't have given you something.
Please, that is fine. Well, there's something on here, but we're not gonna do it, so...
Yeah, there is.
I don't have anything unless you've got something, I'm nowhere...
No, I'm trying not to sneak up on people. But, okay, we did have something down there on the rate of communications, and we discussed a little bit in committee. The man wants to look at the ordinance a little closer, and also, we will have a representative here at our next month's meeting, so we will put this ordinance off until next month. Actually, if you're asking questions, you're asking at the win, so. He will be here, he's gonna be here next month, so we will put that back in later. Any old business anybody want to bring up, any old business?
I just think Wade and all those guys have done a great job, they're just thinking of one day after another. You guys were at the park cleaning up one day, and it was like two days later, you're right back out there again. You guys are awesome.
Monday will be a great...
That's my running trail, man, y'all are doing great, y'all are gonna...
That's right, that's all. Let's all be careful over the weekend, whatever, so that we couldn't get.
Every day, too, with time I turn around, I put a little log on.
I want to, I do want to bring up one item in my comment this night, that's our spring, Sinwatch spring cleanup, which will be starting next month. If anybody's got any, well, they don't know what board reading actually, they can call Public Verb, that number 741-3434, and they can get them on. They can tell them what ward they're located in, and they can also call the mayor's office, 741-2777, and once you're done, they can get it out. Anyway, we want everybody to get out and get all the stuff out, and that will go for inland to pick up.
I love the sound, you can already catch your stuff out.
Actually cleaned our city up tremendously, later on, and we want, we want to stay on that. Okay, at this time in the council, any council members have anything they want to bring to the table? Okay, I will at this time open it up to public. Anybody in the public that have anything?
I have one question. I know we're in care period now with inland. We have a, well, that, a decision being made about inland, what their future is, and some.
Sometime next week. Sometime next month.
With that said, can I ask if, I know we have two inland representatives, I would like to ask about Mrs. Norton, that was your last time. What's her issue resolve?
What's that on Washington?
Yes, sir, 821 East Washington.
I had forwarded the email to the city, I followed up yesterday. I have approved that request, just gotta make sure that it is taken care of.
I went by that location, and it appeared to be trash acceptable out there, but I didn't know, you know, they're taking care of it, or if they still, somebody else.
Inland, inland, the volume is falling the morning after, and so, council.
Mayor, can we, you know, see the fall volume go down, I know it's seen, it has been quite good.
We still keep laws, and we always have kept them. Okay, there have been no further discussion, or anybody? Oh, Mark, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to invite everybody, we're having a grand opening customer appreciation today, tomorrow, out on Industrial Park Road at our new facility, and I invite you, come out and eat a burger with us, or a hot dog, and we'll give you a tour and let you look around. Thank you. It's from 11 to 1.
Are those all beef hot dogs?
I had that question earlier today, I'm not sure. Thank you.
Okay, I entertain a motion for mayor.
If I could just add one more thing. The Bible reading marathon that happened last year is going on currently, all the way to 8:00, and it's, it's going on now, matter of fact, and you can go stop by, check it out, it's wonderful, but then it ends next Thursday, on May 4th, and there will be several things going on throughout the day for the National Day of Prayer, and so, I know at 6:00 here on the courthouse, they would love for some of the city leaders to be there, and you can be there at 6:00 on the courthouse, that would be great.
6:00, when?
Uh, from Thursday, not, yeah, next Thursday.
Next Monday.
May 4, 16, on courthouse.
National Day of Prayer.
The Bible reading marathon, is it, is it common control?
No, it's not. Our very own Eugene Saul is working on tarps for tomorrow, and we may have to go check on them.
But if y'all want, you know, they had their office ceremony this morning, and it was a little nippy, but if y'all want to go down there and volunteer, they'd be more than that, and they can do some scripture. But they're, they're working on it. They're good for us. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for a jury. All of them cleared by?